Hopefully that's not the case tonight.
Folks, we're live, getting ready to go livestream. Mayor, we're good to go.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that, we'll officially call this meeting in the Burlington City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. This is our regular scheduled city council meeting and due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform and livestreamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments and public hearing to address the city council at the appropriate time in our meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so using the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. And that will notify our host that you wish to speak and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If you're having any technical or connection difficulties, John Vernon is standing by today to assist. His number is three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balchutus and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda. Our president can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes. Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Very good. Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Interim assistant city manager Cheryl Brown.
Here.
Public information specialist John Vernon.
Here.
Very good. Director of planning and transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Planning manager Conrad O'Meadow.
Here.
Assistant chief of police Brian Long. PTRC staff Michael Blair and Rebecca Ashby.
Here.
Very good. Thank you both. All right. For tonight's invocation, we recognize Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads for a moment. Dear Lord, we are living in difficult times. We continue to struggle with the pandemic, which affects our everyday lives in ways we never calculated. It affects the plans and decisions we make and it is taking its toll on all of us. We ask for relief from this terrible plague. We are all more fragile than we knew. So is our planet, the very air we breathe, the oceans we are drawn to, and the mountain trees we admire in all their majesty. Remind us that we are the stewards of the earth and that we must treat it more respectfully. Help us treat everyone with the respect and the dignity they deserve, if only for the fact that like us, they are human. Especially protect the hungry, the homeless, the sad and the lonely. Give us wisdom and courage in all our deliberations tonight, Lord. Bless our employees as they work to provide solutions to our citizens' problems and needs. Keep us all, all, keep us and all of our families healthy and strong.
Amen. Also asked that we take just a brief moment of silence for those of you who might have known Mayor Chuck Allen of Goldsboro has passed on Friday of cancer. Chuck served as mayor and a council in Goldsboro for over 20 years. Also served on the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board and Finance Committee, dedicating many, many years of service to the municipal government of this community. Let's take just a brief moment of silence. With that, we have a number of recognitions this evening. A first recognition, I'll call on city manager Harden Watkins to introduce Anderson Rathburn.
It's my pleasure this evening, council mayor, to introduce Anderson Rathburn. Anderson, as you all know, is general manager of the now award-winning Burlington Sock Puppets and we are so thrilled that Anderson and his, his team have become an integral part of our community. We're so proud of all the things they accomplished during this season and it has been recognized by folks outside of Burlington and want to give him an opportunity this evening to share a few of those details. But, and he can give you the specifics, but they have been recognized by the Appalachian League as the, with the league's promotional award. So Anderson, you want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you, sir. Mayor, council, thank you guys for, for having me. Thank you for this recognition. This year has been absolutely wild concerning the fact that we rebranded on February 1st, not even a year ago. And to have a complete season coming off of the heels of 2020 and open up at full capacity was, was something really, really special. We saw an increase of over 35% average attendance from 2019 to this season. We were ranked third in the league in attendance, but we, of the top three teams, we were the only team to increase our average attendance, let alone by 35%. We had record number community support and partnerships and we had a record number season membership ticket sales. So we, we had an incredibly fun, awesome season this year, to say the least, and in the most elementary way. But I also wanted to say, we had 27 games on our schedule and we played all 27 of those games. We had a lot of rain this year. But Casey Garrel, the, our head groundskeeper and obviously city employee, him and his staff absolutely busted their tail this summer to make sure that we got every single game in and completed. So we were extremely thankful to have him and his staff on, on our squad this year. Excited for the future. This is only the beginning. When, when Ryan spoke at the in part, one of the last in-person council meetings back in March of, or February, maybe beginning of March of 2020, he said his goal and our team's goal is to put energy back into this ball club. And hopefully people saw that in year one and then they can know that this is just the baseline and year two is going to completely wipe out year one. So I'm excited. I'm excited for our staff here. Thomas Vickers, our AGM, absolutely crushes activating our ballpark and making sure that our ballpark is first class, obviously with the city's backing. It is a tremendous facility here in the central North Carolina area and it's well maintained by Casey and his crew. So that's all that I really wanted to say. I'm really, really fortunate to be here and, and call Burlington home. And I just appreciate you guys recognizing our club, the season that we had and, and can't thank you guys enough for the constant support.
Anderson, I can't, just speaking, just for someone who's been involved over a number of years, you guys did an amazing job.
Thank you, sir.
And the energy that the, the leadership of that team brings to the community or brings to this franchise cannot be underestimated. And, and as you mentioned, Casey, that's, that's a daily process and and Casey has not figured out how to control the rain yet, have you, Casey?
He's getting better at it.
Casey, you're muted. If you want to share some feedback on that.
No, sir. I have not figured out how to stop the rain yet. When I do, I will be the first to let you know.
I can attest they have a well orchestrated team to get that tarp out on the field quickly. So.
Well, it was an exciting season working with Anderson and Thomas. It was new, a new excitement to the, to the ball field and to the atmosphere. So I just wanted to say thank you, city council, for the decisions that you've made for us at that facility. And thanks for Anderson and his team for reigniting the, the fire that was at that facility. My heart is in that field and is in that team and it is in this city. So I'm glad that we have something there to work towards. So thank you, everyone. Yeah, I'd like to say I thank you both. You know, I had a chance to go out for several games. Our family spent some time out there and it's really proud of the team, proud of the stadium and Casey, you've, you've got that field looking like it could, it's a showpiece for, for, for the city of Burlington to have that and to have you on staff with, with your dedication to it really puts a bow on, on an entirely great program. So a good job to both of you. Thank you. And Anderson, I, I, I do appreciate the emphasis you guys put on family over there in terms of making family friendly. That's, that's really what this type of baseball is designed for anyway. It's a, it's a, it's a good experience. It's affordable and people of all ages can come and enjoy themselves and it's, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for our citizens and we're very thankful for you and Ron in terms of your investment in our community.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, we, we're not a baseball team. We're, we're, we're a community center. So we, we love inviting people out here every single summer and hopefully more events here that we'll be releasing for this fall and the spring. It's not just baseball anymore here at Brunton Athletic Stadium. It truly is a community center. We want people to come here, have a fun time. Win or lose, I don't care. I know I did my job when people are walking out of these gates with a smile on their face. So as cliché as that sounds, I know I, I run Harden and Casey's ear off with that stuff, but yeah, it truly means a lot that, that people are taking notice of that and I really appreciate that, that comment.
I do. I enjoyed visiting many games this year. I really appreciate seeing our community reunited at the ballpark. It's just like, as you said, it is a community gathering. And to Casey, having the, I had the opportunity to sock squash tackle me onto that grass. It doesn't just look good, it feels good. I could not believe how soft and, and plush that field was. You do a great job with that. Counsel, any other comments or recognitions for our wonderful sock puppets team?
Early skeptic on the name, but I have to say you guys did an amazing job.
Thank you. I appreciate, I would actually would like to say one thing on, on that part is I was a skeptic too at first. I, I was actually, myself, Thomas Vickers and Ryan Kerr, our owner, who was leading the charge of the rebranding. And when sock puppets came up, I was actually one of the ones that was a naysayer at the beginning and now I'm the biggest cheerleader. And, and truly we, we wanted a name that puts Burlington on the map and not Burlington, Iowa, not Burlington, New Jersey, Burlington, North Carolina. And we were featured in People Magazine. We were featured across a number of different national publications and, and that's exactly what we intend to keep on doing. It's a goofy name. It's a ridiculous name. It's not a typical athletic sports team's name. But people take notice of it and we want to make sure that we have an experience that backs that up. And we want to make sure people from all over the country, as crazy as it sounds, are coming here to see the sock puppets play baseball.
It was, it was so much fun to see all the fans wearing their sock puppet gear in the stands. I know after the first couple of weeks, all of a sudden it was packed with sock puppets hats and shirts everywhere. So amazing to see the community really embrace the team and I cannot wait for our next season.
And Anderson, my youngest son didn't like the name either. And about after he went to a few games and he went back to school, he, he called me and said, would Dad, would you send me a hat? So I went and got him a hat and sent it back. He's, he's four A's. He's all in there.
Yeah, I don't understand what it is because I was, I told Ryan, I said, if, if we're named the sock puppets, you have to find yourself a new GM. I told, I, that's a direct, why I told him that and obviously I'm still here. I don't know what it is, but some, some people, it, you know, they get it right off the bat. Some people like me, it takes forever, but it eventually clicks. I think once you see what we're trying to do and, 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 and what honestly the sock puppets represents in our community. So we got more tricks up our sleeves. So stay tuned for, for all the good stuff coming out of, of Sock Puppet, or Sockville, I guess I should start calling it, here at Brunton Athletic Stadium.
Good. Thank you, Anderson. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Yeah, that, we'll move on to our next recognition and I'll recognize our public information specialist, John Vernon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Every year, dozens of Burlington residents apply to serve on the city's volunteer boards and commissions. Terms are primarily for three years. Many of the appointed commissioners serve at least one three-year term and a few incidences. Residents apply for and are selected to serve for three full three-year terms. The maximum, the maximum consecutive terms allowed by city ordinance. Molly Whitlatch and Michael Snyder are two such dedicated residents. Mrs. Whitlatch, Ms. Whitlatch has served nine years on the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Snyder has served at least nine years in the traffic commission, but my understanding of his, his history with the traffic commission goes much deeper than that. I will let traffic commission staff advisor, Brian Tennant, speak to that shortly. But first, Historic Preservation Commission staff advisor, principal planner, Jamie Lawson, would like to say a few words about Ms. Whitlatch.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I am very pleased to introduce Ms. Molly Whitlatch. Molly has served on three full three-year terms of the Historic Preservation Commission. During her tenure, she provided valuable insight, expertise and guidance to the Historic Preservation Commission and also served as vice chair and chair. Now I've only known Molly for about a year, but I sincerely appreciate all of her input and contributions, including her work efforts on our recent grant application to update the historic preservation standards. Molly, at this time, we would like to thank you very much for your service and dedication to the community.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you to the council for this recognition and for supporting historic preservation. Our historic districts are a really special part of this community and we should be proud of them. So thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Molly, we have a certificate from the Burlington City Council, signed by Mayor Altudis and most of our council members in honor of your service. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Is it Brian's turn?
Yes. All right. I'd like to say a few words about chairman Michael Snyder. In September of 1992, Michael Snyder was appointed by Mayor Jimmy Garo to fill a traffic commission vacancy. After two years, he was elected secretary, where he eventually became chairman in August of 2001. Michael Snyder as chairman for 19 years before ending his tenure on June 30th of 2021. Michael Snyder is grateful for having served the Burlington community for 27 of the last 29 years. A few of his notable achievements are no right turn on red at NC 62 Alamance Road and South Church Street. Improved safety along Graham Hope Dale Road and McKinney Street. And most noticed, most notably, the city's implementation of the traffic calming policy, where we've adopted and implemented speed humps at Fountain Place and Trolinger Street. Like to invite Mr. Snyder to say a few words on his behalf.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me, okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. I'm very grateful to the city council. I've been blessed to work with many councils over the years and Burlington has had outstanding leadership and I'm just humbled and honored to have been able to play some small part to have helped to make Burlington a safer place to get around, drive in and it's, it, it's been a rewarding voluntary assignment and I have, I have been blessed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Mayor, I had the, I had the privilege of spending eight years with Mike, Michael on traffic commission. So I know how hard he's worked in that role and his dedication and that was a wonderful time and thoroughly enjoyed it. Michael, it's good, good to see you on here again.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Enjoyed having you on the board.
We appreciate those special recognitions this evening and the service provided by both Molly and Michael. Those boards and commissions applications are always open for folks to apply online. We really, really do need committed folks like Molly and Michael to help shape our city. And as you heard tonight, they can have a tremendous impact on how our city functions and develops. So thank you both. But that will move on to a code of ethics and our recognition of our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of the council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts with any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No.
Thank you.
All right. Before council, our minutes from our July 20th, 2021 work session and our July 21st, 2021 city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those?
The move.
The move.
Second.
We'll give that a motion to Bob Ward and second to council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion approved? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we have some additions to our consent agenda. Item E, tuition reimbursement policy amendment. Item F, land and water conservation fund grant. Item G, Burlington Fire Department FEMA Safer Grant. Item H, set a date of public hearing for linked transit fleet replacement. Item I, budget amendment 2022-8 Bonner Bridge Parkway Signs and Markings Plan. And item J, budget amendment 2022-9 unfreeze budget manager position. I'd actually like to have some discussion a little further on item I. So if the council is willing to move that to new business rather than consent, that'd be much appreciated. And then new businesses, item four, budget amendment 2022-10 Police Department Rico appropriations. And item five, Maple Avenue Corridor Raise Grant Application. Do I hear a motion regarding these items?
We approve these additions as requested.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second to the add-on?
I'll second that.
Thank you, council member. Motion to approve the add-on items or consent agenda and new business made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by council member Ward. Any questions regarding the add-ons? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with add-ons?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with add-ons as requested.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Motion to approve made by council member Butler, seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A to approve a reclassification of recreation supervisor youth programming to level 29 to recreation coordinator youth programming level 27, effective upon city council approval. Item B to approve a reclassification of senior center director level 25 to senior center and therapeutic recreation director level 29, effective upon city council approval. Item C to approve a reclassification of maintenance worker to level 16 to street supervisor one level 22, effective upon city council approval. Item D to approve a resolution by the city of Burlington to approve, approving the memorandum of agreement, MOU, between the state of North Carolina and local governments to proceed relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. Item E to approve an amendment to the city employee tuition reimbursement program, Human Resources Policy Manual, section 3.14, effective October 1st, 2021. Item F to approve submission to the, of the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for use of monies from the Water Capital Reserve Fund to match the grant award if received the use of the Guilford McIntosh Park land acquisition. Item G to accept grant funds in the amount of $705,551.64 awarded to the Burlington Fire Department for the FEMA staffing and adequate fire and emergency response, otherwise known as Safer Grant Program. Item H to set a date of public hearing for October 5th, 2021, to consider adopting a resolution regarding linked transit fleet replacement plan and pursuing federal transit administration and state of North Carolina funding through the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Item I has been moved to new business. Item J to approve budget amendment 2022-9 to unfreeze the finance department budget manager position to prepare for ARPA opportunities effective upon council approval. I hear a motion to approve these foregoing consent agenda items.
The move.
Second.
Motion to approve made by council member Ward, seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. Council members Butler and Owen, I did not see a hand on the screen. Just want to check. Is that approval? Thank you. Very good. So all those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we have public hearings scheduled for this evening. Public hearing has been set to receive public comments to consider the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Community Development Program consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, otherwise known as the CAAPER. It is time to, and to begin the public hearing, I'd like to recognize PTRC staff, Michael Blair. Welcome back, Michael.
Well, thank you for having me, Mayor, council, manager Watkins. It's been a few months, but we're here to basically look at the 2021 CAAPER. Any public comments on that and then to approve the HUD by the statutory deadline of September 28th. With us is Rebecca Ashby, who is the PTRC Community Development Supervisor that has been assisting with all things finance involving your program for the last almost a year now. She'll give you kind of an overview of the CAAPER and take it from there.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, council. So I'm just going to briefly go over the expenditures for the fiscal year. The total expenditures were $710,358.37. About $292,445.45 was spent on city updates. That included the completion of the updates to the city park restrooms, the Sharp Road pedestrian crossing and the Quail River project. There was also about, there were a few updates that were made to a couple of the nonprofits, including the City Gate Dream Center and the Ralph Scott Life Services Building and that totaled $41,000. We had $216,040.48 that went to nonprofits for direct care services. A good portion of this money was funded through the CARES Act Fund and it was able to provide rapid rehousing for folks in need of housing. Rental assistance for folks that were, had lost their job due to COVID. It covered some utility assistance, water rental, water assistance. And then it also supported some parenting classes through the exchange club. A little under $7,000 was used to cover relocation fees for a homeowner rehabilitation project that's going to be completed in the upcoming fiscal year. We had $76,949.42 that was used to cover administration fees. Those fees cover things like prepping the annual plan, which is the application for funding every year. It also covers the CAAPER, which is the report on those activities that are covered in the annual plan. It also covers things like monitoring of our nonprofits to make sure that they're in compliance with the HUD regulations. And then we had $77,000 that was allocated to some small businesses in the form of micro enterprise loans. That was also through CARES Act funding. To date, we haven't received any comments, but we can open the hearing for any comments regarding the CAAPER.
Very good. Thank you, Rebecca. Any council questions before we begin the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If any members present in the public wish to speak, we ask to choose the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. This is regarding item one on our public hearing. And I'd also like to direct your attention, if you are having any connection difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. So again, raise hand on your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. Will give folks just a moment to indicate that they wish to speak. I believe Rebecca mentioned there were no written comments, but Beverly, any written comments received to our office?
There were no written comments received for this public hearing.
This will be the last call for any public comments regarding this item. Please use the raise hand feature or star nine. All right. I do not see any requests for public comment regarding this item that I will entertain a motion from council to close the public hearing. Motion to close made by council member Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding the fiscal year 2020, 2021 CAAPER?
I move. We approve the fiscal year 2020, 21 Community Development Program CAAPER.
Second. Motion to approve made by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? I would like to thank PTRC staff for assisting with this program. It's always nice to see your faces, but also to have your skill and expertise onboard. I know you do this work for municipalities all around the region and so we appreciate the scope that you bring to our community in facilitating this.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate, uh, the opportunity to help. Thank you.
With that, uh, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. To Michael and Rebecca, thank you all for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Move on to item two of our public hearings. The public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone a portion of property from the medium density residential. MDR zoning district to light industrial LI zoning district. The portion of the property is located on the north side of Hanford Road at the terminus of Old Coach Road. And consists of Alamance County tax identification numbers one, three, one, three, zero, three, and one, three, one, three, zero, four. And at this time to begin our public hearing, I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Coming up now.
Yeah, everything's showing there, hopefully. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Um. This is an item request, we're on a portion of the property. It's approximately fourteen point two four acres. It's shown here in the hatched portion as well. Uh, it's located on the north side of Hanford Road, just opposite there of Old Coach Road. The comprehensive land use plan does call for the area to be general industrial. Uh, the proposed zoning request is consistent with land use plan is compatible with existing industrial uses. Staff also recommends, uh, the request. You have a, uh, consistency statement sheet, uh, in your packet. We recommend option one. Uh, at the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the planning zoning commission did unanimously, uh, recommend this for approval as well. Uh, this item, as you may recall, was presented to you at the August sixteenth work session. And to date, no public comments have been received. Also want to just click through our, uh, land use plan as well. Case there's any questions on that.
Very good. Any questions for Mike, uh, regarding this proposal?
Also, we'd like to mention that Mr. Ryan Moffett, I believe, is here with us tonight and can answer questions and, uh, explain the requests to the council as well.
Very good. Ryan, anything you'd like to add? Otherwise, we will allow you some time if there's questions that come up in the public hearing.
I'm happy to answer questions. Appreciate you all entertaining the request. And so I'll keep it brief and just, uh, clarify anything that that may come up. Thank you all.
All right. With that, we'll begin our public hearing on item two of our public hearings. So if you wish to speak regarding item two of our public hearings. We ask to choose the raise hand feature located in your Zoom window or star nine, if you're joining us via phone. And if you're having any technical or connection difficulties, we ask that you contact John Vernon at three, three, six, five, one, three. Five, four, four, zero. We'll give folks just a, a moment to indicate if they wish to issue public comment on this item. I believe Mike indicated there were no written comments received. Beverly, any comments that you have noted?
There were no written comments or, you know, received regarding this public hearing.
Okay, very good. All right, again, if you wish to speak regarding item two, let's use the raise hand feature or star nine. Do last call. All right, hearing no comments. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing from council?
I'll move. Second.
Motion to close by, by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes to myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Staff has provided, uh, sample motions on the yellow sheet, uh, or the first sheet of, uh, motions in your packet. At this time, do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
Move, we approve the request to rezone from medium density residential to light industrial district. The portion of property in question is located on the north side of Hanford Road at the terminus of Old Coach Road. And consists of Alamance County tax identification numbers one, three, one, three, oh, three, and one, three, one, three, oh, four. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan. In that the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have general industrial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent industrial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for industrial uses in the area. And the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Right here, a second.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to approve as consistent made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Uh, any questions or discussion regarding this item? All right, with that, all members in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is passed with votes to myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. To Mike and Ryan, thank you for joining us, and I think Sasha here is here as well, so we appreciate you joining us as well. With that, we will go ahead and move on to public hearing number three. A public hearing has been set to consider an application to consider. Um, an application to rezone from the medium density residential, MDR zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district. Property is located at four, one, eight, three, South Church Street, and is referenced as Alamance County tax identification. Number one, zero, six, one, zero, self, seven, and Guilford County tax identification number two, two, nine, three, nine, nine. This time, I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh, staff has been indicated by Mr. Adam Parker, the applicant, uh, tonight. He would like to speak to you to make a request on this item.
Very good. Mr. Parker, be with us. Let's make sure we have, Mr. Parker has.
His privileges? Yes, I'm just bringing him in there, Mayor.
Very good. Give just a moment for that.
Thank you, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
I appreciate y'all taking this time. We've decided that it'd be best for us to postpone, um, and continue. This hearing to the November sixteen meeting. We feel necessary, uh, due to some public comments and a meeting that we held. Uh, for the public, that we need to address a few potential concerns, um, and emails that have been sent out. And so we're gonna do a couple more, um, engineered workups to make sure that we address those situations and, um, just basically ask for continuance for about two months.
Very good. Uh, council, any questions for Mr. Parker regarding the request to, uh, continue until November sixteenth, regularly scheduled city council meeting? All right, no questions from council. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Council, do I hear a motion to approve the request to, um, table till November sixteenth?
I'll make that motion to, to continue to the November sixteenth meeting.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to continue made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes to myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Thank you, Mr. Parker, for joining us eve- this evening, and we will see you again on November sixteenth. I do wanna, uh, express my gratitude to you for allowing extra time. For the community engagement process. That was something that was very important to council when we did the UDO process. I know I've received a lot of, uh, communication. I think all of our council's been, um, provided with that, and, uh, so we appreciate you taking time to be very deliberative in that process.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. We just want to make sure we do the best for the community. We can't, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. You too. All right, with that, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We have, uh, three items of new business, and one of them being the, uh, item I add-on. Uh, item four, city council will consider approving budget amendment twenty twenty-two dash ten. For the use of RICO funds for a donation to the Alamance Countywide Crime Stoppers. To supplement this community program. At this time, I'll recognize Assistant Chief of Police, Brian Long. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Manager. Appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly with you tonight. This request is not a, a new request. This is one that we've done for at least the last two years. Where we've, uh, come to council and asked for a budget amendment that'll allow for us to, um, assist our local Alamance County crime stoppers. With a donation of five thousand dollars, um, and those funds coming from RICO, um, requested funds, so they don't impact the approved budget. Um, like I said, this is not a new request based on current caseload and the cases that we're facing. We'd like to expedite and move back this, uh, request a little bit earlier in the year than we normally do. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the requests.
Again, any questions regarding this request? All right, and fairly standard thing we see quite regularly from y'all, so we appreciate you bringing this up as you need it to maintain continuity in your operations. With that, do I hear a motion from council to approve this item?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, budget amendment twenty twenty-two dash ten as requested.
So here's the. How was that a second?
So was Kathy.
Yeah, okay, Kathy, sorry. A Zoom delay sometimes gets me. All right, motion to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Um, any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. Aye. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes to myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Uh, Chief Long, thank you so much for being here this evening, two nights in a row. Uh, we're gonna let you get back to your work. Uh, we know it's very important right now. Um, and I know we'll continue to share the message that you shared with us last night with our community for cooperation regarding crime stoppers.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll move to item five of a new business. City council will consider adopting a resolution to rescind the city's application to the RACE. Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. Grant for the renewed Maple Avenue corridor plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. This time we'll recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council members, this is a continuation of the conversation that began, uh, last night at the work session. Uh, and so, uh, based upon your request, we have prepared, uh, materials that were provided to you this afternoon. Uh, you'll see the, uh, agenda cover sheet in front of you. Uh, and then we had a couple of, two options, uh, for possible resolutions. If council is interested in those. Mr. Huffman can speak to the difference between, uh, number one and number two. One's, uh, a lo- one's short and one's a little longer. Um, but, uh, again, just to reiterate, uh, where staff is here and prepared tonight, we forward you a couple of. Um, pieces of information through the day that you had requested last night. If you need us to go over that again. During the meeting, we can certainly do that to help clarify, but, uh, as I said, based on, um. Uh, our conversation last night, we have this item ready to go. Uh, background materials from last night are still all relevant today. And like I said, with the amended items that we have, uh, uh, worked on today. I think with that, Mayor, uh, we'll just, uh, I'll stop there and see if the folks have questions for staff. Would like us to, uh, elaborate on any of the materials that were provided today.
Very good. I know we had a lengthy discussion in this yesterday. I believe a lot of questions were answered then and, uh, with the emails today. Uh, so, council member, any questions regarding the, um, resolutions put forth or that have not been answered yet?
I just have one question, just for clarity. If, if we do indeed rescind this, there's nothing that prohibits us from using. The study and the information to sort of repackage this and, and resubmit it maybe in a little different format for next year's grant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And, uh, we had an additional conversation with, uh, Ms. Jennifer Emo at the Ferguson Group who represents us in DC. And, uh, she confirmed that, that would be, we would be welcome to apply any year and any years in the future.
Okay. Pardon, uh, also, I, I think you made the comment last night, which was, which was, uh, I appreciate you, you, you making this. Uh, making us aware of this is that, uh. Obviously, you know, no one knows when or if we'll get a grant. I mean, that's like in most situations when we apply for, for state or federal grants. But your comment was, if indeed there was concerns, um, let's just say that, and be positive that we would receive the grant. But, um, if we could not go forward and match what we now believe is actually going to be the cost of the project. It would be better to make this decision now. Kind of look at the scope of the project, maybe for the next year. And then make application then. It, it is, is that basically what you were trying to make, say to us last night?
I think the, the advice we've gotten from Ms. Emo, uh, in, in preparation for last night was if, if we think there's a chance we're not going to accept the grant. We want to let DOT, US DOT know that as soon as possible. Uh, and then it would be no, you know, prejudice on their part or would not be, uh, held against us in the future. If we thought that they might make an award, um, and then we didn't accept it, that would, that would leave a bad taste in the mouth. Uh, folks at DOT. We do, yeah, I think one of the things I mentioned last night as well, it is pretty standard, and we have watched each year, you know, that we, we've applied the last two years. Unsuccessfully, and we look at the successful applicants, uh, and try to learn lessons from those. I think one of the things that we have noticed. Is it, it is quite common that DOT does not award the full amount. You know, and so we had requested the full amount, which was twenty-five million. It seems to be typical that they award a little bit less, and I know when we applied the first time. Uh, we, uh, when we were doing some of this is pre, pre-COVID, so we were doing some legwork in DC. And, uh, we were asked at that time, if, if we're able, only able to fund a part of your grant, would you accept a partial funding? Uh, we of course said, yes, we'll take anything you give us and, and try to figure out what we could do with that amount of money. So I think ma- based on that, Mr. Owen, I think we would expect, you know, you. My guess is if we were, you know, in any year that we apply, you may not get your full amount, and then at that point, you have to figure out. What part of the project can you do with the dollars they have provided, you know, which certainly means scaling it back. And then, as you know. Uh, oftentimes, uh, cost estimates come in higher than expected. Market conditions have certainly changed here. Uh, since we did, we finished up the plan in two thousand nineteen. Obviously, costs of property has increased, uh, up and down, uh, the corridor throughout the entirety of Burlington since two thousand nineteen. So that would require a lot of, uh, sort of, um, recalculating how much we could get done with the amount that was awarded.
Thank you.
Other council questions? Kathy, yes.
I wanna, I just want to say something, uh, because I'm, I'm disappointed that this is even coming up. Um, because I thought that when we first talked about this and a couple of years ago, that there was consensus that. We had this vision for, uh, the Maple Avenue corridor, just as we have had a vision for Nor- North Park or, um. Other parts of town, and that we knew that this isn't something that we could accomplish in one fell swoop. And in fact, I know that Jim and Bob Ward both expressed worry about the size of the project and, um. Where the money would come from, and I'm certainly sensitive to that. Uh, but, uh, I, I really felt that everybody was on board with the idea that this is where, what we were trying to do, and that we would chip away. At it, at little by little, as we could come up with the money. And so, uh, the fact that we're talking about rescinding this now, just, um, I'm, I'm really puzzled by it. Because it, the, the only thing I had heard up till now is I got a letter from one property owner. Um, and then everything is being talked about rescinding this project, and, um, that's disturbing to me. Um, I, uh, there are a lot of people who have been participating in this. There are property owners along the corridor who have. Upgraded their properties as a result of either our facade funds or on their own. On, on their own idea, because they felt like we were shining a light on this corridor, and they wanted to participate in that. So, uh, I'm, I'm just surprised that this has even come up, and I just need to express that, um, my disappointment in that.
Just to be clear and clarify, my, my concern about it, um, I think that we should do something on the quarter. I think that the. The, the, uh, concept, uh, I still fully support. Never felt comfortable with the size and the scope of it, but the most important piece of the entire quarter. The entire quarter, the most important piece to me got removed and, and, uh. I, I wasn't fully aware of that, uh, when we submitted the third grant, but. I think it should just be repackaged, redone, and I'm not opposed to working money in the budget. Uh, next year to, uh, enhance facade grants. I, I'm totally committed to the quarter. I, I just would like to see it reworked, that's all.
Jim, could you clarify which piece was removed?
The submission had the piece removed from downtown to Anthony, I believe. The plan had it on there, but the grant submission had that piece removed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Other council comments?
Guys, my, my. I think we need, I, I don't think there's anyone, I can't speak for everyone on the board. Does not think we need to take a hard look at this project in terms of what, you know, we're trying to attempt to get done. I, I believe what happened was. That when the design was, was created, I recall, and I had it back in some notes, a figure.
I recall and I had it back in some notes, a figure of that particular time of the number of $26.5 million was noted to us. Obviously, $25 million, you made application, you were hoping for the best. And then, you know, this is where we are. I think many people thought that this was based a lot on aesthetics. And what we came back with was a substantial change in the infrastructure itself, basically getting rid of three lanes in the middle of that road. In my experiences within development is the concept of not having people having access coming down a road, one way or the other, to get into a business creates real challenges for those businesses. And I'm just saying from the years in dealing with mostly commercial, not some retail. The issue last night that got my attention was when Mr. Kirkman made the comment that they believe as this project right now is on the table, the potential cooperation or the potential construction costs will be between 45 and 50 million dollars. And that's a low end. My point is we, if we continue this grant this year, I don't think we have those funds available to go forward in good faith to be able to the matching grant or whatever it may be with this particular grant going forward to pull that off. I just don't. You know, guys, we have, it's amazing. We have hundreds of miles of roadway in this city. It's 249 miles of city streets. There are 70 miles of state road. Maple Avenue is a state road. Today, what I did was try to go and make some contacts with people that I've known over the years. First of all, with state DOT. And honestly, now, this is not something official, but they don't have this on their, on their wavelength right now in terms of funding. I will tell you in terms of matching money at all. So my question is, and what I'd like to see us do is let's, let's step back because as Harden indicated, if we go forward and let's just say we got the grant as it's, as it's now presented out there and we think the cost of building this thing is going to be 50 plus million dollars, I don't believe we can meet that that requirement. I don't see us having that much money out there. My point is step back, look at the scope of the project. Do what Harden basically indicated, just rescind your application this year. Then bring the people back involved, look at the scope of the project and then possibly go back in and make a clean application next year. If, if we, if indeed the cost of that operation is, if the construction of that project is 50 million dollars, technically, if I recall correctly, and I may be mistaken here, there's not enough money in our reserve funds to cover that total cost of 25 million dollars. Because we have to make state statutes in terms of how much has to be in reserves for operations of cities. That's, that's local government commission is going to require that without question. It's going to happen. So my point is, can we just step back for a moment? Get a little clean start here in terms of what we want to do on that quarter. Then put together another request if we wish to next year that can be functionally done in case we would actually be awarded this grant. Then we could, we could go forward with it. I believe if we're awarded this grant and we can't match the money and we can't make it work, we're done in terms of having the opportunity to get grants like this going forward. And that's, that's just my opinion.
Just for clarification, I think it was in the emails, Mike, this is not a matching grant, correct?
That's correct. Our category is a rule.
Thank you.
But Mike, my point is when Noah made the comment last night of 45 to 50 million dollars, matching or not, that money's got to come from somewhere. Beyond, even if you get 25 million. Now, Bob's made this comment earlier about will we get 50, maybe we won't get 25 million. Maybe we will. I have no clue. But my point to you is if we as a city make a commitment to go forth for project and we know it's going to have to be some matching money or some money coming forward to actually to do this project as it being proposed and given to them, we need to be in a position to honor that commitment. And I'm not sure right now we are in terms of, of this particular project as we stand now. Take a look at it, come back, maybe we need to make some modifications, get public input again, and then go forward with it. Because I think it, obviously the, there's nobody arguing that that particular area needs work. Nobody can argue that point. Nobody can. Just what I've looked at, and I went back there today for about an hour, got rained on a little bit, but that's okay. I'm still puzzled sometimes about the dynamics of this project in reference to development on parts of it, because I believe the way the project is presented, I don't know in terms of right of way, is that going to restrict some development in certain areas along that right of way? Because again, the right of way is going to be the big issue here going forward.
Well, and we also have an opportunity to stay committed to the project, certainly the gateway piece that I think was the impetus for the very beginning of everything. And we don't fully know what the treasury guidelines are, but we do have some ARPA funds that we may could accelerate some of it with some of that funding. Let's just get it right instead of having this great big thing, this albatross hung out there that scares me to no end.
And I'll say right now, the ARPA funding is up in the air because as we continue to ask questions about the ARPA funding, it appears roadway construction is not one of the items that's going to be, may not be included. Even to the point where if you go in and renovate and do water and sewer improvements in your roads, you can use ARPA money as we've been, as we've been told now to patch the road, but not to pave the whole road. So that's another, another, another issue that's, again, I'm not saying that's the way it's going to found rulings going to be, but if the federal government level, at least at the state level, that, that is very much up in the air right now.
Any other council questions? Any questions regarding the resolutions as put forward by Attorney Huffman? And just to clarify, there's already been a resolution approved by this council back in March to submit the grant. So that resolution to approve and submit already exists, has votes for council. So the items before by the attorney are motions to rescind that previously approved resolution. Any questions on that? Do I hear a motion from council regarding any action on this?
I'll make a motion and I'm gonna read David's motions that he gave us an option to consider. It's the short one, guys. And am I doing the wheresses? Obviously, at the July, at the June 15, 2021 meeting, the city council adopted a resolution to authorize the city to apply to the US DOT for Raze Rebuilding Infrastructure Sustainability Equity Grant for 2021 fiscal, federal fiscal year. Whereas the city staff completed the Raze application for the 2021 federal fiscal year and submitted it to the US DOT by July 12 as the grand deadline. Whereas concerns regarding the renew avenue, your new Maple Avenue Corridor Plan and a request to rescind the Raze application were raised from stakeholders, individuals owning or at least leasing residential property or commercial property along the corridor. And whereas it's a September 20, 2021 work session, city council reviewed and discussed these stakeholder concerns received and the Renew Maple Avenue Corridor Plan. So therefore, what I would recommend is that we hereby rescind the present application for the Renew Maple Avenue Corridor for the 2021 federal fiscal year and instruct the city manager and the city staff to communicate that to the appropriate federal authorities. And I will add to that motion. Then begin the process of looking at the scope of this project in terms of the possible submittal for this plan in 2022.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
To add one thing to it, apparel with accepted, I'd like to add that when it is submitted, if it is submitted, that, that a financing plan be developed at the same time, be it, you know, putting money away or a bond. I think a financing plan ought to be in place or be thought about and considered upfront.
I, I'm fine with that addition to the motion.
The motion to approve the first resolution with the addition of the financing plan made by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? I will share some comments that a business owner shared with me some concerns representing stereotypes on the corridor. Said no one should walk down Maple because they will get mugged. It is unsafe to bicycle on Maple. You'll be killed by a car. I think these types of stereotypes exactly exemplify why action is needed sooner rather than later, especially as we look at the violence in our community. Neglecting neighborhoods, marginalizing neighborhoods, marginalizing corridors destroys hope and opportunity in our city. And when hope and opportunity is lost, members of our community stray towards gang violence, stray towards crime in our community. And it's exactly, we're trying to create a vision, as Kathy put it, for our city, for the gateway to our city. The plan that was put together by members of our community represents one of our best efforts so far in civic engagement. As mentioned by, by Mike Nun and Nolan Kirkman yesterday, there was a steering committee of 26 individuals involved in this process. Those were Tony Adams of Lindell Team Partners, Gary Ahern of LabCorp, Clay Baldwin of Nicholas Dodge Chrysler Jeep Allen, Vice of Flooring Designs Unlimited, Pedro Cerdano of Infinita Real Estate Group, Judy Cook, resident, Brett Davis, New Leaf Society, Chuck Edwards, NCO DOT, Kathleen Evans, AT&amp;T, Andrea Fleming, Alman's Chamber, John Gilliam as an investor, Keith Hall, National Agents Alliance, Sam Hunt IV, Hunt Electric, Brian Long, Burlington Police Department, Bob Lewis, Burlington Shrine Club, Teresa Manfield, LabCorp, Kelly May, Glenn Raven, Davis Montgomery of Duke Energy, Jessica Pasciello of Burlington Downcom Town Corporation, BJ Patel, Patel Hotels, Glenn Patterson of Patterson Apprables, Pastor Don Peg of Kennet Memorial Baptist Church, Scott Queen of Alman's Community College, David Sui, Proprietary Honor, Grace Vanderweiser, Convention Business Bureau, and Kirk Webster, Burlington Housing Authority, as well as nearly 1,000 people who participated through surveys and the over 30 community sessions, including the Maple Talks, as well as community organizations, nonprofits, for-profits, businesses who devoted their time and energy to creating this plan, which Destination Burlington recognized that Maple Avenue was the highest opportunity corridor in our community and action was needed with urgency and immediately to make an impact in our community. And so this, this plan has waited far too long. It's something where our community truly believed that this council believed in this plan when we first adopted it and that we were going to do our best efforts to start to chip away at this. I know when we first applied for the build grant, our, our intentions were that the bill grant represented an opportunity to leap forward in the phased segments that are included at the end of that plan that offer at least three different opportunities with and without underground utility changes, offering a low budget to a high cost option. But that bill grant would offer us the opportunity to pick an option and leap forward. And so we spent the first couple of years trying to apply for that grant. And, and we're still trying for that. It's not a matching grant. It covers a good chunk of this corridor. And at this time, it seems like a small number of powerful people who have influence in our community are attempting to undermine the work of thousands, a thousand of our residents who devote their time, talent, and passion to our community. I have to share that I had a request made to me by a campaign donor who asked for the return of their funds if I didn't take some type of action related to recalling this grant. And just that, that seeming conflict there raised some questionable intentions about why are we actually engaging in this discussion? Raised those questions in my mind. And I, I cannot support this motion to rescind, not with good faith for our community, not with good faith for transparency in government. I just wanted to share those comments with you.
And Mayor, your comments are well taken. And this is not about the reality of this, though, is what we're looking at is a, a project that has, with the time gone by, has exploded in terms of what the cost is going to be. And if it's, if it's what is being talked about now in terms of the total cost of doing this, that's a, that's a huge investment. $25 million. I mean, here's a part I'm concerned about that. Let's go back to the equity issue. That neighborhood needs help. But there's tons of streets that needs to be built or needs to be constructed or worked on throughout Burlington, in all areas of Burlington. Some of our lowest economic areas. We worked through some, some issues with sidewalks and things of that nature. I'm saying that you possibly can do both. But you've got to plan it and you've really got to take a hard look at the the application or the process of how you're going to finance it and pay for it. Because if we get this grant and if we can't come up and make it work based on what we've submitted, we're done at federal grants for a long time. Again, again, DOT has indicated, the NCDOT has indicated they have no money whatsoever on the table for this.
There's two things that I think maybe we're overlooking just a little bit. In a zealous attempt to, to stick with what we originally started out. And I want to be real clear about this and articulate this, but when we started out this corridor project, we didn't start it out. We didn't start out the discussion looking at this grant. We started it out looking at gateways and what we could do. And it morphed into this grant application piece and it turned into a bigger deal. But I also want to tell you, that was 2017, 2018, and 2019. Well, we got through a little curve ball in 2020 and there's a lot of small businesses that are struggling and they can't even keep their restaurants open all week. They can't find help. And we're sitting here trying to best determine how to spend tax dollars to move forward. And we want to blame it on some powerful people? I'm going to blame it on a powerful pandemic that just ripped the souls out of everyday working people. And we're trying to defend, figure out how to strategically spend the money. And I'm not saying scrap this thing, but the beautiful plan that you just described, Mayor, one piece was scrapped out of it without a lot of discussion. Downtown to Anthony. Let's just get it right. And let's be sure we can move forward with it so that it's digestible and we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars and we're doing the right thing. No does not mean never. It only means not now. Let's just get it right.
Do I hear any other council comments related to this motion? All those in favor of this motion, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Butler, and Councilmember Owen. Votes against from Mayor Protem Hikes and myself. This time we'll move on to a next business item on our agenda. And that is, I'm gonna pull up my too many screens in front of me.
Mayor, I believe we have the Bonner Bridge.
Yep, item I from Bonner Bridge. Budget Amendment 2022-8 Bonner Bridge Parkway Signs and Markings Plan. I asked for this to be included as a new business because that's, I thought about this last night after our meeting. It occurred to me that kind of like we're talking about with Maple Avenue, this, we, we made a change to this plan, which I think was a good change going to 1212 on this. But as, as Michael Snyder exemplifies in his service to our community through the Traffic Commission, being really intentional about striping and traffic calming is critical to safety in our neighborhoods. And I think one, we're, we're being asked by the community to strike this road in a way that promotes pedestrian and bicycle and multimodal safety through the McIntosh neighborhood. It's something that needs to be done. There's no disagreement there. I, I looked at that plan and felt like it was rushed based on complete streets and modern thinking on traffic calming. Especially when we look at some of our other traffic plans. And while I appreciate the desire of council to switch to the 1212, I wanted the opportunity for a little further discussion to see if there was a any desire from council to maybe even ask for a deeper dive from staff on this. My thoughts have been, we, we see desire for bike lanes throughout our community. I'm not sure about the left turn lane proceeding through almost all of this when only a fraction of turning traffic would be left. And it would jeopardize safety of bicycles. and it would jeopardize safety of bicycles. Also, things like traffic circles, which McIntosh already has more traffic circles, circles than any other part in our community, and they do work for traffic calming, might be, we have many roundabout designs that we've seen in other plans, might be a good fit for some of these intersections. But I really would love to have, instead of a, a brief council tweak to the plan, a deep dive from our experts on staff to look at what the best way to ensure traffic calming for the long run is with the striping so that we don't see requests for speed bumps or some other traffic calming coming back to our council on this in the very near future. I just wanted to get the appetite from council related to that and being intentional with making this expenditure.
The, the reason I brought it up originally is because it was brought to my attention that we approved it already on the consent agenda in March of 20. And it came through Traffic Commission at the time. It just never was funded. So getting it, getting it funded, we've, we've added a lot of burden to the residents out there with the apartments and some of the things that we've approved. And we, we told them all along the way that we were going to walk with them on this with the traffic and various things. But in my opinion, I'm, I'm no traffic engineer. Nolan, I know what the MUTCD manual is, National To Green Book, but I don't really know what's in them. But my, my point to that is city staff can certainly come up with the plan that would be consistent with what we've done. And as a matter of fact, I think I heard you guys mention that you've got a meeting with their HOA board. I would say to, if we could review it with them then, I'd like to just get something that they're happy with.
That, you know, it's, it's pretty amazing if you think about that development from when it first started in, gosh, the early 2000s, that, that was the largest development and it still is ever been presented in this, in this city. And, and then you saw how it, it took off. And then unfortunately, stock market crash came in 2009. Bob Ward did some of his best legal work in terms of saving infrastructure because of bonding out there. And what has happened now in the last 10 years is I, I believe they're at a point of one, of one additional development is built out. Now, that's a, that's a pretty amazing, and that's not even including what Jim just indicated, the apartments that we, we, apartments that we approved on the way into the actual development. So whatever we could do, because there's a lot of young families there. There's kids who, I know we have sidewalks that walk to school, but I, I think we owe them as much as we can in terms of trying to get something there that, that provides them a sense of our, and we understand what they're asking for and how can we help. Now, if Nolan, if you and Mike has a better approach than what's on the table now, you know, please speak out and tell us. But, you know, I think we're all just trying to respond to the citizens on this one.
Their, their HOA, I think, made the priest recommend the request to the Traffic Commission way back in 20. And the Traffic Commission approved it and it came to us on the consent agenda. I'm assuming, Nolan, that staff would have just got together and created a plan anyway. I, I, I don't have no problems moving forward. I just think we need to do something to, to get it in motion.
And, and it very well could have been left out of the budget this year due to the COVID situation. I'm not saying, I don't know that. It very well could have been. So, I mean, that, that's the question that staff can, can answer. And I'm not being critical of that.
No, no, nor am I. I, I don't, I don't think that's the case at all. But what I got to looking at was the amount of growth that they've had out there. And, you know, while we look at the, the, each of the rezonings that we've gone through and the apartments that's gone in out there and the additional traffic that's been put, some of the developers helped alleviate some of that with some of the stacking at Highland Elementary and so forth, so on. But I think this is a final piece to the puzzle that, that the residents out there at least have been expecting for quite some time.
The development community out there in terms of the private developer of a residential community, they were asked to participate at an all time high, as I can recall in the city, in terms of making sure that when this thing was indeed was built out, it would be still a, 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 a community that was safe, but also a community for, for children to walk, to ride bikes, cars, but also to keep its value in terms of property. And even though we went through that difficult time in 2009 with the, with the market crash, we came through it with another gentleman buying the, the actual project and he has basically revived it. And, and you know, it's, it's, it's until people ride out there sometimes, I don't know if they know how many, you know, just how well or how that, that community is, is really a, a, a community of us to be very proud of. And we got, and we got people living there from all over the country, guys, that moved in.
And it's probably, what is it now, six, seven, eight percent of our population? In, in that area.
And I think that's just why I want to be really intentional with this. And I have no objection to approving the budget amendment. I just want to make sure that the design truly does meet the long-term needs of the residents there.
And I think that's staff's role and you guys know how best to handle that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. Yeah.
So Nolan, Mike, how do y'all, do y'all feel like that's the, the best plan y'all can bring forward or?
I think as it was mentioned earlier, the, the other part we're trying to fulfill is to meet with HOA and to get their feedback. But this was a concept that was, that was approved and supported by the, by the residents when it first came to Traffic Commission. So we can certainly check and make sure that that, that marries together once we talk with them and get more feedback. But yes, this has already been an item that, that the community did approve and support.
Sometimes folks don't know what to ask for. They only know what they know. And so I would encourage y'all, when you meet with the HOA, to, to talk about traffic calming and some of the solutions that we've proposed throughout our community, some of the innovative solutions now championed by communities and NCDOT around our state, and to see how those resonate with the HOA. Because again, if we're going to spend this money, I'd rather make a, an additional budget amendment to this with additional requests from the HOA now rather than have to go back and restripe all too soon down the road. So. But staff, do y'all feel like you can, you would like us to approve this budget amendment? And then you can bring us any changes to it as requested by the HOA tonight?
If council's willing, if council's willing, we'll go ahead and get it done with the comments that's been made. We can discuss that with the HOA, but then we don't have to put this back on an agenda again. Nolan, do you want to say something different?
I was saying, that's, that seems reasonable what the mayor said.
Yeah, I'm amenable to that. Again, I just want to make sure the residents have access to kind of great traffic calming suggestions and that this meets their long-term needs and the taxpayers' desire for effective application of tax dollars.
Yep, good point.
All right. With that, unless there's any other council comments on or change, a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2022-8. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Potem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Potem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we move to our public comment period. This is the general public comment period for items appearing on the agenda. If anyone wishes to make a public comment during this time, we ask to use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us by phone. And if you're having any technical or connection difficulties, you can dial 336-513-5440. It looks like we have one request so far and that's from Jim Albright.
I'm going to have to drop off. I just wanted to let you guys know I'm, I'm going to have to drop off.
All right. Sorry to lose you, Jim, but I appreciate you joining us this evening.
Safe, safe travels, Mayor. Good evening.
All right. So Mr. Albright, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lose one Jim, get one Jim. So a little quick replacement there. I think we will have some, Joe Lima may be in the audience also and may raise her hand in a couple of moments. But anyhow, I work with Almanz Citizens for a Drug-Free Community and we have been supporting East Burlington through a grant that I coordinate, the North Carolina Behavioral Health Equity Grant. First three years, we kind of worked a lot, lot with the city of Burlington with the youth solutions. In the last three years, we've been focusing specifically more in the broad view Cummings area, building and enhancing protective factors and reducing risk factors for youth and their families. And about a year and a half ago, we began focusing on the Latino population and just decided to start supporting that and linking the population with, with the community and back, back and forth. So this year, this time last year, September 15th was the first time I'd even ever heard of National Hispanic Heritage Month. It'd only been going on, on a monthly basis since 1988 and a weekly basis prior to then 1968. So just learned about it and have just really enjoyed working with the community. And we've done a lot of interviews with the community and supporting them and have learned how important family and community is, is to the community, the Hispanic community. So we had an event at Almanz Arts on Cinco de Mayo was our first event where we had music and food trucks and it was a resource fair. And then one of our county commissioners mentioned John Paisley that September was National Hispanic Heritage Month. So we decided to go ahead and plan one of those. So it has resulted in the first annual Almanz Hispanic Heritage Festival. It's going to be this coming Saturday at Almanz Arts. And so it's going to be a full day from 12. There's our little flyer showing up there. Full day from 12 to eight and it could be owned into the evening, at least until eight, but we've got a lot of entertainment. And are you able to tell if Joe Lima is on the call?
Joe Lima has requested to speak next, so she'll be.
I'm gonna kind of turn it over to her. Joe Lima was a part of our Esperanza event and that's when I just got to meet her as a performer. And Joe Lima, of course, is on your community police advisory team. So I thought it would be very fitting for her to kind of tell a bit about the festival and she's a really dynamic person and personality. So I'm, I'm just gonna hand things over to Joe Lima at this point. Thank you.
Good. Joe Lima Vargas, that is your turn for public comment. And actually, Jim, before you go, are you still with us?
Yes, yes.
If you could, just for this record, state your address.
It's 404 Southwest Maynard Road in Cary, North Carolina.
Very good. Thank you. And then Joe Lima, Joe Lima, I'm going to ask that you state your address as well, just for the public record before you begin your comments.
Of course. Can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. So my name is Joe Lima Vargas and my address is 2154 West Front Street, Burlington 27215.
Thank you.
So everybody, thank you for having us today. Briefly, I'm echoing what Mr. Jim was talking about. He said, this is an amazing opportunity to celebrate diversity, but also how much we have come to, to, I guess, enjoy each other's company and enjoy the growth in the Almanz County. So the event itself doesn't only celebrate family and colors and diversity, but it's also about sending a message to our residents that everybody's welcome, that things are changing, things are getting better, that diversity is enriching our city and our county altogether. And so we hope to do this annually and we hope to make it bigger. But more than that, we want to invite you all to come and celebrate with us. We want to have representation from the city government. So we get to show people that you care, that you are there with us and, and that you participate in things that matter to the residents of, of not only the city of Burlington, but the Almanz County. So I thank you for the opportunity to allow us to share this with you tonight.
Thank you, Joe Lima.
Joe Lima, I would imagine there's going to be some pretty good food there, will it not be?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Not only food, but we will have entertainment, music, as well as, as well as activities for children and adults. We will have a parade as well. And so if you're looking for something different, something new, something colorful, please come and join us. Please do.
It's a great event. And Jim, thank you for all you've done in, in, in our community too. We very appreciate all your efforts also.
All right. Thank you. I've, I've really enjoyed it. And the national theme this year is Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. And Mayor Baltutus was just talking about hope and opportunity a little while ago. So that's what we're trying to just kind of be the bridge to kind of link that Hispanic heritage and hope to our community. And just a couple of stats, Burlington has about 19.3% Hispanic population. The county's a little bit less than that. I think about 13.1 and Graham is about 17 and a half, somewhere in that, that area. But anyhow, as Joe Lima said, we'd love to have you all out there. And one of the things that has not been mentioned is we're going to have a mechanical bull on the front lawn of Almanz Arts. And so we would kind of wonder, you know, which of you council people could win the Burlington City Council Bull Riding Contest? So if y'all want to get that going, we, we'd love to support that. And as, as I mentioned, most of our, or a lot of our efforts are in East Burlington. So we just, we don't want this to be a Graham event. Happens to be in Graham, but we want, you know, to, the Burlington, the whole Almanz community, county community, we've, we've been advertising over to Greensboro, all the way over to Durham. We're going to be on Fox 8 on Thursday. So we're hoping to draw people in, you know, from Greensboro and Durham area for this big event and hope as, as Joe Lima said, the first of many to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, if we would nominate David Huffman as our representative for a bull riding event, would, would, would that be okay?
Just get a second in there and we, we'll go with it.
We got a second on that one anywhere, guys?
All right. We'll start promoting that.
Your schedule, buddy.
We'll get them talking about that on the Maverick. We've got a commercial on the Maverick. So we'll go ahead and say, come watch David Huffman ride the mechanical bull. So he's agreeing. So that's awesome.
I'm ready.
All right, Jim and Joe Lima, we appreciate you joining us tonight. We look forward to a wonderful event. Hope you have good weather on Saturday and I will see y'all out there. Always a fan of the Atomic Bull and no, no opponent to bloodying some knuckles riding that thing. So let's have fun. With that, we have another person requesting public comment. This time we'll call on Ms. Van Hook. If you could state your address for the public record and then your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Baltutus and members of City Council and Mr. Watkins, City Manager. I just wanted to, for the record, give my address, 317 Caswell Street in Burlington. And also give the mayor an opportunity to, he, he was not able to answer the question that was posed by the Almanz Democratic Women, which was his position on the Western Electric Building and whether he would press the federal government for solutions to the contaminants that are affecting East Burlington residents. One thing, and another thing I would love to hear from the mayor is you gave quite a few names in reference to the Maple Avenue corridor. I would like to know how many of those, I was trying to keep up, you said a whole lot real fast. How many of those persons are of color and have a vested interest in what's going on, on that side of where 85 is at located? So when persons come off of 85, they see a lot of dilapidated buildings and undeveloped and in dire need of revitalization buildings in that area. So I would like to know those two things specific to the mayor. And I would like to know from the city council as a whole, what are you prepared to do as far as the contamination with the Western Electric Building, which I worked at in the 1990s, right before it closed, and it was called AT&amp;T at that time? Please give me a response to those two questions. Thank you. You all have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hook. Unless council would like me to respond to a partisan, a question from a partisan event preceding this event, I don't know that's appropriate for me to issue partisan comments. But I will reference that a, the list of steering committee names is on page five of the Maple Avenue Corridor Plan Final Edition as posted on the Maple Avenue Corridor Plan page of our city of Burlington website. And so the names listed there are included in that document. Council members, this is generally receive comments. Would anyone like to address Ms. Van? Council members, this is generally receive comments. Would anyone like to address Ms. Van Hook or would we like to request further comments from anyone else?
I, you know, I, I, I think to Ms. Ms. Van Hook poses a, a, a really good question about Western Electric. And I, and I think Peter's on the line and Harden, and I'm gonna ask you guys to help out here. This is an enormously complicated issue that frankly, many people believe that the federal government, or especially through the federal government should certainly step up and come in and do the, to do a thorough research and, and attempt to remedy some of the, you know, the issues that we face there. Now, I, I know Peter has been working with the property owner. And that's not, and, and the point I'm getting to is, this is a really, really complicated project. So Peter, if you're online, where do we stand at the federal, working with the federal level in terms of trying to get the cleanup, the underground cleanup is what really is the crucial, one of the crucial things here?
Certainly. And thank you, Councilmember Owen. There, there's really an entire team of city staff working on this project. And actually, and I think it's tomorrow or the next day, we have our monthly staff meeting where different staff from different departments, including engineering inspections, code enforcement, police, fire, myself, Mr. Kirkman's on that call. So we're working together as a team to identify options and see what we can do to move the project forward. The property is a federal superfund site that is managed by the, the State Department of Environmental Quality. And it has responsible parties for the subsurface, the underground contamination to the groundwater there. And those responsible parties are the United States Army and the US Army Environmental Command and the legacy companies of Lucent Technologies and AT&amp;T. So we are, I guess, in a good position that the federal government and the Department of Defense has a role as a responsible party in the cleanup. They are going through the federal circle of process and are in the remedial investigation phase of that process, working with a contractor that was just out on site again this past month. And that contractor is going to determine the current scope of the contamination and review all of the feasible engineering options to deal with that cleanup and, and remove any water or soil that needs to be with a remedial action plan. So we're about halfway through the process, that circle process. This is the second run-through that circle process. So there had been previous work done to the site to try and remediate the chemicals in that groundwater plume that was unsuccessful. I, I would agree with some of the statements that this has been a slow process. Of course, I've been with the city about five years, but there are those that came before us that have also worked on cleanup with this property. I will reiterate that this is privately owned property. It is not owned by the city. We do work and maintain contact with the, with the site owner there. But this cleanup process is managed by NCDQ and their superfund branch in coordination with the US EPA and the responsible parties being the US Army Environmental Command and their sister agency, the Army Corps of Engineers. So we, we are regularly in contact with these individuals. We've made numerous site visits with them to focus on the cleanup. We are also working with the property owner on selective demolition and reuse of the property in certain spaces and have issued permits to that effect. There is additional demolition going on in the building one, the main office building at this time. And then I'd also like to state that the, there are monitoring wells for groundwater and for vapor intrusion that have some permanent, some temporary, that have been both on the site and off the site to measure where the chemicals are and if there are public health and safety impacts to residents off the property. So those have been done and are continuing to be done. But I, I, I think it's frustrating for us because the city is not in control of this cleanup process. We are not pushing the schedule. We are pushing as much as we can in our role with this cleanup process, but it is being led by the state and the federal government.
Harden, the podcast that was recently published or articles written concerning the site, there was comments made about adjacent home where the comment was made about water quality at the home itself. And I know I'd contacted you and asked it. Have, have we been able to get a water test at that particular residence yet?
Sir, I'm gonna ask Mr. Patterson if he can turn on his camera and join us. Mr. Mr. Owen asked that we test that water based on what was stated in the article and our Water Resources Department has moved forward with that. Mr. Patterson, can you take it from here?
I guess, Mayor and Council, we have, our staff has reached out to the resident and talked with him. He was receptive of us testing the water. In order for us to test for the, the solvents that are in the groundwater contamination, we have to use a special lab. We had to send for sample bottles and their sample kit. We just received that today. We have made arrangements to, to meet with the resident and also his mother's property on Thursday to take those samples and then we will send those back. Of course, the groundwater should not have any influence on the drinking water as the drinking water is sealed pipe system, but we will run those tests just to, to make certain.
Thank, thank you. Thank both of you all.
Yes, sir. Any other questions from council for Bob or Peter? Appreciate that update. This, we still in public comment period. If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise hand or star nine feature. Beverly, while we're waiting, did you receive any written public comments?
There were no written public comments received.
Very good. I did not see any further comments. So at this time, we'll move on to city council comments. City council, any comments this evening? I will share some upcoming events, cause I know how much y'all love upcoming events. Elon Fourth Friday is this Friday. That is our fourth Friday combined with Elon Parents Weekend, an exciting event. There's lots of information online about it. This was a huge treat a couple of years ago when we did it for the first time. We're excited to bring it back to downtown. There's parking plans and busing plans out there. There'll be a lot of folks coming to our downtown. If you wanna join us, please do. 5:30 to 9:00 PM, September 24th. That's Friday this week for Elon Fourth Friday. And then as mentioned by Chief Brian Long yesterday, we are asking for community support to curb the violence in our community related to latest events. And there are a couple of recommendations. One, secure your firearms, especially if they're in a car. He shared some stories about individuals who are breaking into cars, attempting to steal cars, and then often finding firearms and using them in some of these crimes. So secure your firearms responsibly, secure your vehicles, lock and lose it every night. And then lastly, report any tips to the Crime Stoppers and the P3 lines, cause that's through text and email as well. That information's on our city website. Crime Stoppers, it's a wonderful program. And you being our eyes and ears helps us solve crime in the community. And then I had one other comment, really a question for council about your opinion. We're in a unique political landscape this fall. We've got a lot of candidates running for office, which I think is exciting related to civic engagement, but it also means there's a lot of yard signs out there. And we're seeing them clustering and forming in new fashions that we haven't previously seen in municipal election years. And it's raised some concerns for me related to yard signs that are starting to encroach into city property that is also right-of-way. So I'm talking about spaces along like City Park, where there's grass in the right-of-way, but it's also basically City Park, city property. I've also seen this happen at Eva Baker Park, along North Main, Robinson Park. So these are city properties where yard signs are starting to encroach into the park property. Even into mulched areas in Eva Barker near the sign. Mulched areas in Robinson Park on Crete Myrtles near the parking lot. And my concern is, we, we all know that it's not appropriate to use city property for political purposes. Whether that's using City Hall to campaign, nobody would allow a, a political yard sign in the front lawn of City Hall. That's city property. So are our parks. And, and it also raises a concern, we have our city crews out mowing and mulching. And it makes me uncomfortable the fact that a city landscaper might have to pick up a yard sign to mow and then might have to put that back, either damaging it or being photographed by the public as placing a yard sign. Or, or even moving yard signs inappropriately from where they were originally placed and means that might seem to be providing an advantage to one candidate or another. And I, I think Attorney Huffman might be able to provide some clarification, but based on our UDO and signs in right-of-ways, they're permitted in right-of-ways with the permission of the property owner. So in this case, a right-of-way on a city park would be with permission of the property owner or the city. And so I think city council could issue a statement here and basically either grant or rescind permission for any and all politically yard signs in our city property that is also a right-of-way. And so I just wanted to get y'all's feedback on that, cause again, there's more candidates than we've ever seen in municipal elections this year. And so there's more yard signs that we've ever seen. And they're, they're encroaching into our public parks. And that, that bothers me from a ethical standpoint of utilizing city property for political purposes. So I just wanted to get y'all's feedback. Attorney Huffman, if you wanted to elaborate on any of that?
I'd like to ask David, you know, sort of give us a little background here, you know, where we are, what we can do, what we can't do.
Sure. And just to give a little background there, Mr. Mayor Baltutus, we spoke this morning and had an opportunity to review some of the statutes. North Carolina General Statute 136-32 that pertains to this, particularly subsection F. And we have adopted so much of that state statute into our own UDO that addresses political signs. And he's correct that there's a requirement that adjacent to the right-of-way, whoever is the owner of the property, you have to give permission to the candidate or whoever is asked to be able to put the sign in the right-of-way directly in front of the property. Specifically, the mayor was asking, what about city-owned property? And frankly, Mayor, I would say it this morning, I think I'm correct in having spent the afternoon looking through these statutes and our ordinance. I think you, as the city council, have the authority to address this issue as to whether or not you, you want political campaign signs on city property in the right-of-way. Further, you have say-so as the, as the elected board as to whether or not you would allow such signs to be actually on city property. I know that Mayor, you just said that if it's somewhat bothersome that you see it. And I think you mentioned Barker Park. And you got signs that are actually up beyond what is clearly the right-of-way and into some of the vegetation there. I don't know that historically we've ever allowed such to happen. I think we've always addressed it just strictly in the right-of-way. And as as I read the statutes, as the elected board, you too could address whether or not you want them even in the right-of-way fronting onto city property. So just to give you the table 5.61 in your UDO addresses this, as well as once again, North Carolina General Statute 136-32. Don't know if y'all wanna make a decision on anything tonight or whether or not you'd like me to be able to get a memo to you over the course of the next two weeks and supply you with this background information and make a decision at that point in time or not.
Thank you. Just, so just to clarify, a political sign in a right-of-way should not be placed unless prior permission from the property owners received.
That's correct.
So what, the way I interpret that is I, I don't know that city council's ever expressly given permission for politically yard signs on city property in right-of-way. I know that, I don't think we would ever permit a private advertising sign, like a landscaping service or something like that, to put that out.
Yeah, commercial signs get treated, is treated differently.
Okay, all right.
You're correct.
Okay. Yep. So we, those would be immediately moved by staff if they were appropriately placed. And so having not previously expressed specifically permission, I'm kind of looking for y'all's thoughts on this.
David, and, and certainly Bob, if you could chip in here. I'm very open to, 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 you know, to give you guys to the next meeting, some research to come back. And, and if indeed we have the authority, I'm, 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 I'm fine with that in terms of, of regulating. Now, we, I think we gotta make sure we we regulate it throughout the, throughout the park system. But I'm, 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 I would think that if you could provide us basic information at the next meeting, how we could you know, start this process and then let people know about it, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
No. Go ahead, go ahead Kathy, I'm sorry.
Did we notify all of the candidates what the rules are around yard signs or any signs? I know we have size. The size of yard signs, I know we were limiting that. Do we let them know what those rules are or do they just have to call on their own about that?
It's like, let me, let me just say this. I think the, we ran into this issue about four weeks ago when it pertained to the, the dates when signs could go out. And frankly, we worked through the Board of Elections because they deemed that to be their role here, and they wanted to be consistent and make sure that everybody got the same information. So I would suggest that we do that yet again. But obviously, if they're running for city council, this, these, these ordinances and these statutes are up on the website. But it, it does put that authority with the elected board to be able to address this. And I think you've all, and the mayor, you put your finger on something here that's probably done, been done historically, but maybe not with a lot of thought.
And I will say, as a candidate running, the Board of Elections does provide candidates upon filing a packet with all the municipal guidelines for signs. However, we did discover that, as David mentioned, there was a discrepancy where they're providing old information circa like 2001. And we had made some updates since then related to the time schedule when signs could go out. So I think they, David worked with them and provided an update to that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to pull that information together for you and get it to you by the middle of next week. So you have time to look at it before the next meeting. I'm good with that, yeah.
That's good for me.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Other questions from council regarding this? Are we comfortable with the status quo on this currently? Recognize we've never expressly given permission for these signs, or would we prefer to take action that the signs be removed until we expressly make a decision to grant their permission? Cause right now they're, they are existing without express permission on city property.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly would say to you that as far as that, those signs that are up on, far beyond what could even be argued to be the right-of-way line, I, I, I think it's only makes sense for the city staff to go ahead and pull those. And I would also suggest though, that instead of doing anything by way of destroying the signs, just call the candidates. Many of them just simply probably don't know. And I think we could ask code enforcement to, to do just that.
Very good. Council, any objection to staff working with candidates that have signs egregiously out of right-of-way into city property?
Say that again, I didn't understand.
So David was saying that staff could contact candidates who have signs that are out like that beyond the right-of-way into city property and have them removed immediately?
I, I, I think that would be entirely appropriate.
Let me clarify that so we can give that direction to our codes enforcement team, that we would call candidates, that they would call candidates first and ask candidates to take care of it. That would be the preferred. And then David, I think you said, then go get them ourselves. But first step, I think if y'all are amenable to that, is just, we can make a phone call with the candidates.
Yeah.
And say, hey, would you please, anything, anything that you have in a park, can you please take care of that? Is that, does that line up council's wishes?
Let me, let me ask one, one question. You mentioned the word public right-of-way and then park property. Okay. So are you referring then to the
Okay. So are you referring then to the public right of way for the road? Or are you referring to specifically the park property?
Hey, we're, we're, we're saying we're not gonna do anything in the net before y'all take action or consider this matter in two weeks as far as the right of way is concerned. But if, if these signs are obviously sitting up in the vegetation area of a park, nowhere near the roadway.
I understand. Yeah.
And I'll be, I'll be glad if you would just let me know if, I'd be glad to contact the candidates. Must just run, run it through this office and we'd be glad to do that. Provided I live through Saturday's Bull Ride.
Well, you know, you can, you can always have a sick day Saturday, David, not, not, you know. You can take alligator sick leave you've earned.
David, could you go ahead and start calling, say tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, you know, before you go over there Saturday?
I probably need to.
You know, Bob, my only question for David going forward, if he does go over there, it, it, what's the, what's concussion protocol gonna be when he's taking off that, off that ride?
He doesn't have far to fall, so he'll be fine.
Yes, that was good.
I will say too, I've noticed signs in a fire department property. So in addition to parks, fire departments. So again, it's, it's a weird year. There's a lot of signs in a lot of places. And that's why I wanted to bring this topic up for council. So things evolve in our community and it's our responsibility to have these conversations. So I appreciate council being amenable to this discussion. Any other questions on this? Otherwise, we'll see it on October fifth council meeting.
Right.
All right. Any other council comments? Otherwise, we'll adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye twice.
All opposed, motion is passed unanimous with council. Thank you everyone for your time tonight. Have a good evening.
Good night to all.
Night, guys.
All right.